We have a quorum to call the City of Groton Committee of the whole meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021 to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Present, we have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, Counselor Rashad Carter, Counselor Lisa McCabe, Counselor Paul Norris, Counselor Christine Piazza is excused, Counselor Stephen Sheffield, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, and City Clerk Megan Peters.
Okay, thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda we're going to talk about is 798, Lake George Wetland Enhancement Design and Implementation Project. That's going to be presented... You ready? That's going to be presented by Mara Robey. The way that I know her is through the Baker Cove Watershed Committee, but Mara, could you introduce yourself and who you work for and then go give an overview for the Lake George project?
Sure, okay. There we go. I don't know, I had trouble unmuting. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Mara Robey, Natural Resources Specialist at Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, or ECCD, and I'm also the Watershed Coordinator of the Baker Cove Watershed Committee, or BACKWAG. And so, I'm happy to be here this evening to inform you that ECCD has been awarded the EPA Clean Water Act Section 319 Non-Point Source Pollution Grant by Connecticut Deep, or Department of Environment, Energy and Environmental Protection. And this is for the Lake George Wetland Enhancement Design and Implementation Project. It is a proposal that I have applied for now, this is the third year. So, we're really happy and I'm glad everybody kind of hung in there. So, we finally did get it, and it is in the amount of $325,000. And so, the state is also providing match requirements, so we won't have to provide that, which is good news. And also, just a little background, I met with a number of the folks from the city, pertinent folks to the project, including the mayor and Heidi Camo of Public Works, the planner, the inland wetlands person, Parks and Rec, so all the folks that would be involved in the project. And we went over a conceptual plan that was done a number of years ago by the Nature Conservancy, and then we also went over details of the project. So, that was back in December of last year, and I submitted this grant, I believe, in January. And the background of Lake George, as many of you may know, it is not actually functioning anymore as a stormwater detention basin, as it should be. It is 70 acres that drain into this Lake George, and it's compromised by vegetative overgrowth, sedimentation buildup, erosion, and this is could be causing some downstream sediment that's getting into Birch Plain Creek and contributing also to high levels of fecal coliform bacteria that are ending up in Baker Cove. And it's impaired, Baker Cove itself is impaired for direct consumption of shellfish, and that is listed in the 2020 State Water Quality Report. So, some of the next steps will be to work with Connecticut Deep to come up with some more details of the planning. And actually, that, usually, the actual contracting process between ECCD and Connecticut Deep, it's probably going to be at least a year out, just to give you an idea about that. And so, we will go to bid for a design and implementation plan. And some of the types of wetland detention basins, it could be is an extended detention, shallow wetland, or a wet extended detention pond, that will be determined. But at any rate, it will definitely be an improvement, and the design will be more of a bio-retention wetland, so that it can infiltrate and retain the pollutants from stormwater runoff. So, some of the ways to do that are, there will be channels that are in a continuous pattern to slow down the stormwater and the velocity of the stormwater, provide water quality treatment, stabilize the banks, and enhance infiltration of stormwater during those peak flows. They can also construct mounds, regrade the edges, so that you can get more plant species diversity, and then place woody debris, and that mimics the natural systems and adds to the bank's stability. As far as for the public benefit, we'll add boardwalks and paths and then educational signs on the importance of wetland ecology, and then also enhance, this will enhance the pedestrian walking route and highlight this as a community asset. So, there's a possibility too, to add more trees as well, if that's acceptable. And then lastly, it calls to remove the asphalt bank that runs along Marine Street, next to that Lake George, and replace it with riparian vegetation that has a lot more benefits, especially slowing down runoff, stormwater runoff. So, this, this project was listed in the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan, which is what the BACKWAG works off of, and it's a recommendation of reducing stormwater pollutants that are getting into Birch Plain Creek and Baker Cove. So, another thing that we'll be doing is, or probably I'll be doing, is taking water samples at the outlets, so we can look at performance results. And I have to thank Groton Utilities for offering to do some testing in their lab for four dry and four wet weather samples, and those will be on Ecoli, total nitrogen, total phosphorus, and total suspended solids. So, I really, I want to thank everyone who just, you know, committed in the city to doing different things for the project, the mayor, of course, technical assistants, and Public Works, Parks and Rec, providing labor and equipment to install pathways and landscape plants and educational signs. And then, of course, some technical assistance will be done by the Nature Conservancy as well. So, really, congratulations to you all. And I just, I really believe that all the work that's being done by the Baker Cove Watershed Committee has really helped to show Connecticut Deep that the city and the town are really committed, and they're taking action to improve water quality in Baker Cove. So, thank you again.
Okay. Questions from the council? Counselor McCabe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a timeframe where, when we'll start beginning work on this project to our projected time of, estimated time of completion?
Yeah, so, as I said, it, it, we never know exactly when the contract's going to come through. Typically, it does, it takes a year or more, and I put in the proposal that it would take two years for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Devin, Mayor Depot?
Well, mine's less of a question, more of a statement. I know, obviously, this project is interesting for the health of the watershed and all of that stuff, but I also wanted to just say I'm happy that we're doing something with this area. It is one of the questions I kind of frequently get from people about why there's like a wasted space at the park, which we all know it's because we haven't been able to do anything with it, because it's wetlands and you can't just do whatever you want. So, I think this will be a cool project to see, hopefully, we can draw some attention to it, so residents will see that we're, we're doing something with that area. And a lot of people do walk, so it's, it'll be really nice that that's more walkable, and especially for people with, you know, one kid's playing baseball at the park, the other kid might be bored, so now they can walk around and read about the, the water, the project there and stuff. I think that'd be really cool.
Any other questions? Counselor Norris?
Thank you. This was quite an education for me. I had no idea we had a Lake George until I called a colleague and said, "Where's that?" So, thank you very much. Quick question, though. So, in the application process, we have, the next step is to do permitting with deep?
No, no. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. ECCD, my coworkers and I will be working with deep to come up with, you know, a more detailed plan, and then they, they need to actually come up with a contract that they, you know, that we have with them to do the, to do the grant project. So, that's...
Got it.
Pretty much. There's not, we will, we will assist the city with any kind of permitting that they will be needing for this project.
Got it. Because I was, where is, can someone, where is the stormwater coming from, the runoff?
Well, you have some sheet flow from the park itself and from the parking lots, but you also have water in the roadways.
All right.
That's going to the stormwater drains.
Got it. Right. Because it just clicked also in the, the plan here or the sketch, looking at putting stone dust pathways within the flood zone? Or within the wetlands, so to speak? I'm sorry, it's not a floodlot, the wetlands?
No, those won't be in the wetlands. They'll be outside, outside of that wetland. That's going to be, you know, a retrofit engineered wetland.
Okay.
And so, that will be for folks to be able to walk around on the outside.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
One of the things that people have asked for is a structured walking path. This will get us that. And I talked to some people today, not today, Saturday, at the Community Speaks Out softball game, and they said, you know, this, and I was talking about this project, and they said, "That'll be great for passive recreation. Sometimes I just want to get out of my apartment, get out of my head, not think about work, and just relax." So, I, I, I think there are lots, there's environmental impacts of this, which is what we've been working on for two, this is the third year we've applied. We've been, this has been talked about since I got here in '17. So, it's environmental, but it's also for leisure and recreation and helping our residents during this time that we have here with COVID. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So, Mara, at this point, at this point, there's no action for us at this time. This is merely informing, right?
Yeah, yep. I will let you know when there's action needed.
Okay. So, just wanted to bring it to council, let you know, and it's something that's, you'll hear, you'll hear about again. All right. Thank you, Mara. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I need, I need, let's see, what do we want to do? On the suspended rules, I need a motion to add 773, which is Parks and Recreation, to the agenda. And other, under that, there's two items. One is the Tyler House windows, and the second is Ragnar.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You, you will for the windows when I get to them, when I get to the windows right away. The Ragnar is informing. So, with that...
We need to vote?
Uh, yeah, we need to vote. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay. With that, who's going to introduce? Mary, will you introduce? Okay.
Megan, is this on?
It is. It should be.
And this is informing?
There it is, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have today with me Amber Sadler from the Ragnar Relay Organization, which is a running event. They came to us back January 2020 to try to do a Ragnar Relay out of the city as a starting point, May of 2020, and as you all know what happened in 2020. So, it kept getting pushed back and get pushed back, and we're finally, at the time, where we're actually going to kick this off in October '22. Eastern Point Beach is going to be the starting point of this race, and it's going from Eastern Point Beach to Quincy, Quincy, Mass. So, I, Amber, I asked Amber to come in to share with you what the Ragnar really is, so that you understand the concept of what it is and how it's going to impact us on a Friday morning, but it's only for, well, maybe a Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening and Friday morning, so that you guys have information to share if anybody questions it when they come in. So, I'll have Amber take the, the mic and give you some information.
Okay.
Can you, before I leave my mask on?
You can take your mask off.
Okay. So, the Ragnar Relay, it's kind of a big one to try and explain, but I can nutshell it. We've typically been in Cape Cod, starting at Nantesket Beach and ending in Provincetown. We were there for about 10 years. We took over the event about six years ago, and it just kind of, no pun intended, ran its course. It was time for a fresh start, and we really wanted to bring the New England feel to people. We scouted, it takes about two years to scout out a course, and this just seemed like a fantastic place. And every time I come back, I'm like, yes, this is a fantastic place. So, we're looking at starting at Eastern Point Beach. The relay consists of 12, 12 teammates per team. Historically, it's been 500 teams. This year, it's only 160, partially because it's a new course and we want to see, like, how much we can contain, and partially due to COVID. The Delta variant has really thrown us for a loop. I mean, the whole pandemic has. So, that's why typically we would have these permits in about four months in advance, if not more. So, each team has two support vehicles, and they meet every six legs. There's 36 legs of the course. So, the 12 people, some of them are six. I would not personally do that, but some of them are six people, and so they're running twice as many miles. They just relay it to 35 different exchange points between start and finish. It's a great team building, a team building activity. We have a lot of high school teams and a lot of charity teams that are fundraising for a cause. And then, every exchange point, we try and use schools and churches. Each director does it different. I specifically look more for churches, because then I'm able to offer a donation to them as well as volunteer opportunities that they may not be eligible for grants, and, and that. We are a for-profit company, but this year, about 25% of registration fees is going back to the communities in those volunteer positions. We have about 700 volunteers on the course, and they are all given a monetary donation, as well as the donations to the facilities we're using. We are insured under USATF, so I have a certificate of insurance for the town and the city, which, this is really confusing to me, guys, the town-city, like, dynamic. That's been a struggle for me, but I think I, I think, I just double-checked. I think I've got it. So, I probably missed something, because I know what's going on, and it's all new to you guys. So, do you have questions for me?
Counselor Carter, you have the floor.
I don't, I don't have a quote, can you hear me? I don't have a question. It's a statement. I'm familiar with the, with the run, with the relay. It's also big in the law enforcement community, you know? So, I was wondering, when you said the 160 teams, it might actually, that's going to fill up pretty quick as soon as you get the okay, you know? But it's a, it's a big-time event. I almost, almost ran the Cape Cod one, I think, three years ago, and I chickened out.
Should have done it. If I can do it. I, I have a lot of children, and five of my children have run the Ragnar Relay, so...
Yeah. No, it's, it's a good time, too. That's right here, all my coworkers.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So, when...
Counselor Sheffield?
When is it tentative to start? What, when did you want to start this week?
So soon, October 22nd.
So, we need an emergency permit, I guess, or is...
Yes, everything is so last minute, and we are looking for those last-minute permits to come in. Some of the towns are struggling with that, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, because we postponed three times now. And then, with the Delta variant, we were very close to canceling, and with the vaccine widely available and then the protocols that we've got in place and the lower team count, we feel comfortable moving ahead. We've got, we've, we've gotten approval for finish lineup in Quincy at Squanton Point Park, and that was really key, as well as Miss Guamaket Beach is our largest exchange point. That is exchange six, and so with the state parks onward, we're now moving forward, like, this much work in this amount of time.
So, it starts in the city, but it's not a lot in the city, right? Starts at Eastern Point Beach and then goes down, goes out Thomas Road for everybody here, right? So, you know how much of that's in the city, so they're not going to be spending a whole lot of time in the city. We already talked to the police. They have an eye plan for this, and they're standing by, ready to go.
Yes, and I did fail to mention, I start them in waves, so I don't have more than 12 teams starting at a time. Normally, it's 25 teams, but, you know, just that comfort level with the, the pandemic still a thing. So, they start every 15 minutes, between 5:00 AM and 11:00 AM. And then also, for future reference, this will typically be in May. So, I will start permitting for the May event. After this one, we want to see if we need to alter the route in any way. The police in each town, you know, there's a level of, it's a new event here. Fortunately, a lot of them are familiar with it because of the Cape Cod event, and then we have one in New Hampshire as well. But we want to see how it goes before I start that. I was going to be dual permitting, but until we see what that looks like, we want to wait. So, that will, we're looking at, Miss Guamaket Beach is available the weekend before Memorial Day, and so that would be annually, we, so we're not hitting all our year tourists.
Right. That's good. Devin, Mayor Depot?
All right. So, it's on the Friday morning. Are, are there going to be a large number of people staying locally in hotels and stuff the night before?
That's a big thing. It typically boosts the economy quite a bit, and you find business owners really mad because we bought them out, or really glad because we bought them out. Like, you never know how they're going to feel, but the hotels book out early, restaurants book out, and you've got groups of 12 going into those restaurants. And so, I would like to see, I saw a Chamber of Commerce building on the way here, however, I believe that was for Westerly. So, I would like to see if I could just put the word out through the Chamber email, letting people know, like, stock up. These guys are going to want ice. They're going to want water. They're going to want coffee, and they're going to buy you out.
Devin, Mayor Depot?
So, my next question is really for you. Do we have a way that we will be notifying business owners in the city? Because I would imagine if there's, so there's people running the race, but their support people aren't running the race. So, I imagine those people are going to be having maybe a little more fun, maybe going to the local bars or restaurants, and so are we...
Thursday, Thursday night also, because they stay Thursday. So, Thursday night's going to be probably their biggest night for, as far as the restaurants and bars and whatnot. People are excited, so they go out, they can't sleep. They stay out all night, and, which is crazy to me, but that's when we find the biggest hotel night and restaurant night. So, I have no problem reaching out to them. I can connect with the Chamber and send out a mass email, or I've been having major email problems. For whatever reason, our URL is blacklisted like crazy, so it often is better if the Chamber sends that out.
I was going to say, I'll give you my card. If you contact us, we can put it on Facebook, get it out there. We'll get people to share it. We can also get it to the Chamber.
And we also really encourage, our runners are very connected through social media. We really encourage those businesses to go on the actual event page and let them know, like, hey, we're having a special, or we're this, this close to the start line. And that way, it can help so people know where to go. You know, if they're just funding something on course, that's fantastic, but if there's something three-quarters of a mile off that they're not seeing, we don't want that business to lose out while the other businesses are selling out of food, you know?
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor McCabe?
I'm very excited to have this race come here. It's, it's kind of a bucket list for me.
Good.
And so, if 11 people in the city want to go run with me...
I'm telling you, if I can do it, if I can do it. After COVID, I don't know if I can do it. The running was minimal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have my card, and then we'll be in communication.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Anything else from the council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing is 603, Ordinance Review Discussion, Ordinance 167. Joe, that's you? This is the harbor management plan that we talked about?
Yes. What the Harbor Management Commission and the mayor's looking for is your approval to amend Ordinance 167. The main purpose of revising the ordinance is to change the dates for the wake buoys to be in the water, from a very short duration to year-round, because we've been getting complaints of, you know, heavy wakes and a lot of speeding going on there. And with the deep permitting, it's a very short date, and to get that permitting, it's a process. So, this will allow us to keep the wake buoys in the water year-round. Right now, we're looking at possibly three locations. That's something myself, the Harbor Master, and Dee are going to be looking at. Dee has gone through personnel changes, so hopefully it'll be a little easier now. And since we're revising the ordinance, a couple of things we're looking at doing is, under Section 2-5.7, is to change the flood zone designations to match what we currently are referencing in the flood zones with the current FEMA maps, and to update some of the references from the old DEP to the DEE. So, with that, you know, looking for your support in moving this ordinance forward, so we can apply to Dee for the no-wake buoys. Any questions?
Questions regarding this ordinance or this, this agenda item? Okay, we'd sent out an email earlier, so once we go through the committee of the whole, we then do the first reading of the ordinance at the next meeting. And then, we do the second, second reading a month later, and then we go to the DEP for approval. Any other, any other comments? I need a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of October 4th?
Okay, thank you.
So, move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Is Linda here?
They were both here.
Okay. Then, in that case, we're going to go to 655, Department Presentations, Electric and Solar. So, with that, Len?
Yes.
So, what's, what brought this about is that the, there were some questions that came up during an RTM meeting about solar and about programs and power supplies and power generation and those kinds of things. And I asked Len to come here, give the presentation to the council, and then, once we have this videotaped and on YouTube, we will then forward it to the moderator and to Town Manager Burke, and then the RTM members can then see it. But I think there's some things in his presentation, once he goes through, that, that the council, current council and maybe past council, may not be aware of some of the things that we're doing. So, with that, Len, I'll kick it off to you.
Very good. Is this mic working at this point? Shut off.
Nope, it's on.
It's on. Okay, good. Good evening. My name's Len Mediavilla. I work here at Groton Utilities as a key account manager, and had worked on the installation of several solar projects in the past few years, and want to make that awareness open to members of the commission, council. The first one is the franchise area of Groton Utilities and the three solar farms that would, were assembled and put into use on the property. And basically, it's in the northwest corner predominantly on the, where the Navy base is and the Navy housing is. There are three solar farms there. And the, as you can see, that the two-thirds of the town of Groton is surrounded by water on the left side and the bottom side, and basically, a good portion of this effort was done to minimize the carbon footprint for the energy that is consumed within the, in the area. Jill, the next one? Thank you. The next one is Basra Light and Power, and I re-raised that, because Basra Light and Power also has a solar farm up in that area, and that area is supplying energy to several towns. A little bit of Norwich, a little bit of Franklin, all of Basra, some more in Lebanon, and a little bit of Salem, and a little bit of Colchester. But that red outline overlaid on all those towns shows that area, and there's a 2.7 megawatt generation located there as well. This is a... This is a picture array of the Trident Park, and it's the name that the Navy has for that area of, of the, uh, housing and land. A consortium of, um, the Navy and the desire to make excess land available for renewable energy was made available with Balfour Beany, Balfour Beany's, um, management organization that manages all the housing. And they are using the energy in the homes to take in, uh, defray on the cost for the personnel in the Navy. And this shot is a shot of the, one of the, uh, solar panels. It started in early, uh, two thousand sixteen with the removal of vegetation because of, uh, environmental concerns over the breeding of animals, uh, and, uh, birds and bats as well during the forest that was, uh, cut down. Next, please. This is Polaris Park, same process. Consortium also is made up of CMEC, where CMEC is the Connecticut Municipal Electric Energy Co-op that buys all the energy from the grid for Groton Utilities. And Groton Utilities is a member of that co-op. And that's why we're getting energy much more economically through their, uh, being a broker on the ISO New England um, grid and where energy is moved around and controlled. And they, uh, do a good job of acquiring the funds to take and, uh, buy those kilowatt hours. And there's one more park. And this is Nautilus Park is another array that went in on the, uh, same, uh, basic property, uh, all owned by the Navy. Can step into the next one? Now, this is also for Nautilus Park, but we're also integrating on the lower level. You can see where some of the solar has gone on the roofs of the, uh, dwelling units for the Navy. And that we're gonna, uh, talk about in conjunction with the solar farms. One more? Here's some of the facts. Of those three sites, six point seven three megawatts of generator was put in. It covered twenty-eight acres in total for those three solar parks. This isn't neglecting the, uh, one up in Basra Light and Power, which is on another twenty-five acres. Of that, it was approximately a fifteen million to twenty million dollar investment. It was put in by SolarCity. SolarCity, uh, uh, since then has been bought out by Tesla and Tesla Energy owns the arrays. CMEC Energy acquires the energy, buys it on a PPA, purchase power agreement with Tesla. And that energy is in turn consumed with, totally within our grid, cleaning the air, keeping the air cleaner up here and also uh, creating a pool of renewable energy, uh, that we're all after for lowering the, uh, carbon footprint. Next. Here's some more, uh, statistics, what I was really impressed when it had all gone in. There's twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six panels. There's twenty-eight hundred and sixty-nine posts driven to hold them up, seven thousand feet of trench, ninety thousand feet of conduit, which about, which is about nineteen miles of conduit, over six hundred and ninety-one thousand wire, uh, feet of wire was pulled in, which is a hundred and thirty-one miles. And over twelve thousand feet of fence installed to protect the, uh, arrays for, uh, the Florida, the farmer and the, the bad guys that like to break things, so. Next statistics, over fifty-four million kilowatt hours per year, which is three point, uh, three megawatts, uh, total. Fourteen hundred and forty-eight tons of greenhouse gases are avoided. It's avoided, uh, carbon dioxide by forty-one hundred and ninety-six metric tons, seven hundred and sixty-nine equivalent motor vehicles, which I found out just recently that forty percent of the emissions here in New England are done by our motor vehicles. I was surprised at that magnitude. Also, gallons of gasoline, almost a half a million gallons of gasoline and barrels of oil, almost ten thousand. Next. Now we're going into the residential solar homes. Of the solar homes, this is the Trident Park. Again, another one. Polaris and one more. The, uh, outstanding one of Trident. So you can see basically in the color differentiation of the roofs that have the panels. One more? This is one of the community houses that, uh, Balfour Beany has, uh, assimilated for their community. And there's four of those that are also, uh, have solar on the roofs. There's forty KW on the roofs there where you can see most of the, the black stripes on the roof. Another. In this area, there's eight hundred and two home rooftops with a hundred percent installed on, on, uh, solar panels. Of those panels, it was four point six, excuse me, four point zero six six megawatts of, uh, demand generation. And that's on a total of about four to six KW for, uh, each of those, uh, homes. We estimate that in twenty years, it's about twenty percent of the total use of, of, uh, of Groton during the, uh, the process when it put in. Over a hundred employees put those up in, in, uh, less than six months on the roofs. The homes were already up and they just basically put them on the roofs and then wired them down to the ground and we'll get to that in a moment. So this is the, uh, PV, uh, value of these solar homes. Another one, please? And here's the, the count on the homes again. How many kilowatt hours? Four point seven million. Uh, tons of, uh, greenhouse gases was, uh, just over, uh, a thousand sixty tons. The CO2 or, uh, carbon dioxide again was, uh, three thousand three hundred and thirty-nine metric tons, equivalent of seven hundred and five motor vehicles. Three hundred and seventy-five gallons of gasoline were saved and the conversion to barrels of oil was seventy-seven hundred and thirty. Next. This is a basic diagram of how the solar is produced. On the roof of those homes are the panels designated by the black, uh, rectangles on the roof. The energy comes down off of a little red line there that is, um, produced, uh, as DC current. It goes into an inverter, which is in that little green box. And that green box then allows the energy to convert, be converted to AC. It goes into the electric panel and the little gray panel. And that goes into the grid of the home, used in the home. And the excess goes back into the Groton Utilities electric power grid and helps defray the news of other, uh, sources. And then it goes out, basically out on the power lines, just to give you a quick interpretation of how it gets there. Next. This is actual physical plant of one of the, um, community houses. And it's the magnitude on the far left is the meter of the electric meter, Groton Utilities. Then there's a, uh, control box, uh, in the pale blue. And the red is a disconnect switch. And then the, the, the white box is basically the inverter that converts the DC from the panels into the AC. Next. Here is another setup of, um, panels that were put in by, uh, CMEC. And CMEC, um, up in Norwich and Norwich is one of our other utilities, just to give you a size of the mag- magnitude there. And Jill, one more? CMEC basically had acquired, um, all the, the solar that was, uh, coming in, uh, on that from the purchase power agreement. So in eastern, southeastern Connecticut, it's made a, um, magic, uh, improvement to the air and the, um, the, uh, costs of, uh, energy. And it's about twenty megawatts total to give you an idea of the magnitude endeavor that was brought about by CMEC, the municipal utilities in Connecticut, six of them that are members of CMEC. And bringing renewable energy to ours, community and our state. So that's. That's okay. I'm fading away over here. Not talking enough. Any questions?
Council McCain.
Thank you for this presentation. It was really interesting. Um, if, if, if any of our citizens are interested and are thinking about having solar power put on their residential homes, um, is there any sort of programs that we can get involved in?
Oh, yes, definitely. Um, out of the eight, eight hundred and two, that's, that's the magnitude of, uh, most of them. In Basra Light and Power and Groton, we have a, uh, program where we, um, measure the energy that's gonna be produced. That menagerie, energy is, uh, forwarded to DEEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. They actually do an assessment of the angle of the roof, the tilt of the, uh, roof, the orientation to due south. And they come up with a power clerk diagram and document. That document goes to the licensing authority. Licensing authority from the state, DEEP again, comes back to us with what level of kilowatt hours can be produced. And they quote a, uh, grant or a incentive. That incentive at this point for fifteen KW, these are round figures, is about forty-six hundred dollars. We pay the customer that value and at their, um, magnitude that they can put on the, the house. They are also subject to a, uh, federal tax credit, which is presently forty-six, excuse me, twenty-six percent of the total cost after our incentive is done. What's tough for our customers though is we're paying sixteen cents a kilowatt hour. The, the others, and I unfortunately live there, is EverSource, I'm paying twenty-three cents a kilowatt hour. The difference between the sixteen and the twenty-three is the business case for most of the installers. Very few of them want to do business because we are the lowest cost per kilowatt hour in the state of Connecticut residentially. So it's tough. Tesla, uh, device was just put in, uh, last week, uh, in, uh, in Groton and we have, uh, a smattering of a few, few homes in Groton. But again, the costs are so low, they're hard to compete against the, uh, the, uh, other utilities. The other utilities are full retail, retail value, kilowatt hours.
So is there an address or a phone number that, say I'm interested?
Customer ser- call our customer service. They're there twenty-four hours a day. They'll take your name, address, and, uh, I respond to the majority of the solar questions that come out. And it's daily.
Thank you.
It's, you're welcome.
Customer service is eight six zero four four six four thousand. Now, I want to piggyback off of what Council McCain said. There's a rumor out there that Groton Utilities doesn't want to do solar in the city of Groton, so don't try to do solar here. And that rumor is started by the people that are installing the solar panels because they're looking for a certain payback. And one of the things that Len just talked about is if you're buying power at, what are we currently?
Sixteen cents is average.
So sixteen cents, that means you're selling it. You're selling it sixteen cents. So if you're selling it twenty-three cents and you're looking for a payback, or you're selling it at sixteen cents and you're looking for a payback, then the payback for the sixteen cents is gonna be longer. And what happens in some cases is that the payback is longer than the useful life of the solar panel, depending on what kind of solar panel people get. So that's, Len and I, I wanted to talk, I wanted to bring that up here because I've had people come and, and, and tell me, and this came up during the, the, uh, RTM, that Groton Utilities doesn't support solar, solar energy at all. And that's not true. And obviously you can tell that we are supporting it. So you gotta understand what the payback is. Council Sheffield.
So yes, what would be the average cost then for a single family to, you know, install a solar panel and then on the reverse side, see the savings?
At this, this point, it's, it's really difficult because the variations of, of the roof size, the roof's tilt and so forth. It's about two dollars and fifty cents per, per, uh, watt at this point. And that's, they're, they're looking for twenty to twenty-five years of payback if you're taking a loan. Our, uh, constraints here are also that you have to buy the energy from our utility. And that's what keeps the co-op together. And our, our utilities rate's lower because if you could take and get the full retail value back, it's gonna come off the, out of the pockets of the people that don't have solar. So it's at our, our avoided costs that we're actually paying that energy back to our customers that produce excess energy comes back to the grid.
There was another question that was asked the RTM about energy audits. Why doesn't GU do energy audits? GU conducts energy audits. If you go to our website, there's a, uh, you go onto the website, go to the webpage, there's a section that talks about energy audits. And if you want to get an energy audit conducted, again, call eight six zero four four six four thousand and request an energy audit. Now, the energy audits are not performed by GU. They're performed by a contractor.
Vendor, yes.
A vendor.
Yeah. That produces, in, in that process, they will take and do a blower door test and cock your windows, cock your doors, come up with, uh, ways of saving energy, actually offering, um, additional, uh, fiberglass or insulation to your attic, uh, up to twenty-five hundred dollars to, to take and bolster your, uh, heating and cooling costs.
Debbie Maradipo.
Is that something that, say, a tenant who is maybe more concerned with an energy audit would be able to call themselves to initiate that process and connect the landlord? Cause I know a landlord might not be as aware of an energy audit being needed and it might be easier for a tenant to initiate it first. Um, is that something that they can initiate?
Yes, a tenant. And we do, have done many, many, uh, tenants. We've done the, uh, Housing Authority. We've done, uh, Grasso, um, Gardens and, um, Branford, uh, installs installations. Uh, the way it's done is that the tenant desires, the tenant gets a document that has to go to the owner, landlord, and the landlord has to sign off on it. And then the process is, is identically the same as a homeowner. But you need the authority from the landlord. And it's done on the same numerical basis, the same rights that the tenant versus a homeowner.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Council Norris?
I just wanted to say, I went through the audit at my house and, um, the folks at Groton Utilities absolutely spectacular, professional, helped in everywhere possibly needed. Also the vendor, the third-party groups that came out and did the audit and did some work there was phenomenal. I was surprisingly pleased on
Great.
the work and how inexpensive our electric is compared to, um, what others are charging. So I strongly encourage not to increase your workload here, but it is well worth the, uh, to, to get the audit done and at least understand what's going on in your home. It absolutely is.
Well, thank you. Unsolicited too.
Anything, anything else from the council? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Len.
You're welcome.
Pass that. Pass that, please. So the next thing we're going to talk about is seven seventy-three Parks and Rec, the Tyler House windows. Mary?
Good evening again. Uh, so I come to you tonight, uh, back in March of twenty twenty-one, earlier this year. Um, it was, um, we approved the second phase of the window project at the Tyler House at a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we started some of the project in early thi- this spring. We started some of the project in early, this spring with some of the work that we could do while we waited for the windows to arrive. And upon doing work, we discovered that we could potentially have lead in some of the existing paint. So Gasko, the company that we hired, did what they could in the spring. We did have some testing done, and we do indeed have some lead in the paint of the window trim and some of the, and the windows, because they're all painted. With finding that out, I come forth today to see, to do a change order to this project because I have to get it remediated. Gasko, the company that we have contracted, has reached out to a company that he works with hand in hand. Because this is a project, the window comes out, they have to do the necessary remediation. He can move on to another window while Dave puts the other, resets the new window. This is something that we didn't plan for and didn't encounter in the earlier phases of the project, so it is something that all, everything's there, the windows, windows are there, the lift, anybody's been to the beach, the lift is there, the dumpster's there, everything's there. So I, I am in, looking for another thirty thousand dollars. I can find it in my capital improvement plan, because there are some projects that have been budgeted in the past years that we have not even, either completed or addressed. And I come forth to ask for that.
David Mary Depot.
So the original funding for replacing the windows came from redirected bond funds from Colonel Ledger, correct?
That is correct.
Am I, so can we, I'm assuming that we can't tack on to that amount because it was approved for that specific project, correct?
Right.
So if we, so this money is coming out of your capital budget. Are there other projects that you're not going to be able to do because of this?
Correct. There's, one of the areas I looked at, we have, we budgeted three, two years ago for replacement, or to start looking at the roofs of our pavilions. And so there's fifteen thousand dollars there that I believe, some, it was just roofing, so we might be able to do that in-house and, and cover that cost under materials and supplies, under the guys, the crew doing it. And then we also had budgeted monies for replace, start replacing the bleachers at Washington Park. And through the course of looking into that project, bleachers come under the building department. We have to go, there's building codes, once you go over fifty, fifty seats in a bleacher, so we're still working on that process of how we're going to replace the large bleachers that we have. It would still give me nineteen thousand dollars to continue with that engineering and planning process to get those bleachers replaced, but down the road, we'd have to budget for The replacement, not the, the engineering and planning, but once we figure out what we can and cannot do by building code, then we'd have to budget for those.
And for those projects, we could, if they're immediate, we could look at ARPA funds, but if they're not immediate, we could look at repurposing additional bond money for future projects, because we do still have some money there. The concern about, if we wanted to, if you wanted to repurpose, it's got to go through council, go through referendum, Freeman, Freeman meeting in order to repurpose that, whereas we have money, Mary has money now in a budget that is available that can be reused for this job.
Okay.
If it's, if approved by council. David Mary Depot.
Oh, I mean, I would, I just want to say that I would like if we could try to manage to still do the projects that are on your list, because those are, to me, big impacts to the community. People use those pavilions all the time, and the bleachers, it would be nice to have new bleachers, people, especially, you know, we've got the new, the Lake George project, people spending more time at the park, so I would really like if we could figure out a way to keep those on track.
Absolutely. So would I.
Well, so would I.
We're, we're working. Ron, go ahead and help me on here.
We, we just actually had a meeting about this this morning, and it was kind of a director that came out of there for Mary to first look at her budget to see, but there's other avenues that we're also looking at, so we're not saying that this is exactly where it's going to come from. We just wanted to make sure we did have a source to come tonight before we ask for approval on this. So by the time, if this does move forward, and at the next meeting, we will have a defined funding source, which may not be those capital projects Mary's talking about. That was just a first look, saying, okay, if we need to do this and keep it moving, how do we get that money? But we are looking at other, other pieces as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the key was to find money.
Right, no, I wasn't.
No, no, I, I get your point. I, no, I'm, I'm good. And you're right, the bleachers, they need to be ADA compliant. That's going to be a challenge. They now fall under building. That's another challenge. Mary informed me of this, and so we have some hurdles we got to go through there, but we just, we have new lights in the ball field, we're going to be making some new changes. True. We're going to be grooming some areas around the ball field and things like that, so all this goes hand in hand with the rejuvenation of our parks. So, was that, Councilor Norris, did I do?
I was just going to ask, is there a contingency built in the original pricing and this additional twenty-nine-nine?
We had a contingency of sixty-six hundred dollars, because we actually, this was a project, the window project came through last February and then got approved this March, so I actually got an updated quote before I came to the council in March, as opposed to coming to you with my twenty-twenty February quote. So we, we built in a five percent contingency instead of a ten, because we actually knew what our numbers were for the window project, not knowing about the lead at that time.
Right. So is the contingency gone and we need to?
Nope.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ron.
And this is a not to exceed. We don't know the extent of it. This was, I believe, a worst-case scenario, Mary, if you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So it, it's, it's really a not to exceed, it's not a set amount. And then there was also a reduction from Gasko, because it's work that they will no longer be doing with this other company doing the removals, so that's, I think there was a credit on that sheet that you received.
Right. So based, based on the results of the lead and the overall lead amount for what we're disposing, there's a possibility that we may not have to spend that thirteen thousand. But thirteen thousand is worst case, so I asked Mary to add it on in case we have to go to that. Because what, so you got to pull the old windows out, you got to scrape the paint and get that cleaned up, that needs to be done by the lead guys, and then the re, the installation of the new, new nylon clad windows is just simple, right? Because once the, the paint's abated, it's not an issue, just go right in. But we do have to have the right company with the right credentials and using the right, right procedures for doing it. So that's why we're coming to you. That's why, and that's why we're coming to you tonight quickly, because, now, I'm not asking you to look at it tonight, but I wanted to bring it to you tonight so you guys would have time to think about it, but I am looking to move it for next, next week, once we finish discussion. Councilor Sheffield.
Have we worked with this environmental company, Enco?
We have not ourselves, but Gasko, the company that's doing the work on the windows, has a very strong professional relationship with him. Gasko is a historical restoration company, so obviously this is something they've encountered in the past, so this is a company that Dave is comfortable working with, because it's, it is a hand-in-hand operation. You know, they have, Dave will remove the window, the environmental company will do what they have to do to make sure it comes out the right way, take care of any of the loose paint that's in the framing, and then Dave will come back and install the window. So it's a, kind of a tandem kind of thing, they kind of work together, and this is a company he's comfortable with, working with.
So, so this is the invoice that we have now, or is this some, just a proposal at the moment?
This, from Gasko, is the change order
Okay.
that he, they submitted to us as the company that has the contract.
So, so Gasko is still going to be the, the main contractor, and this, the invoice that you got from that environmental is actually a subcontractor to Gasko, so we will still be paying Gasko as the main contractor? That was just the quote that they got as, for their sub to do the environmental.
So we don't really have a final, potentially a final cost, so as far as getting access and where we're going to get the money for this, if it happens to go higher than twenty-nine-nine?
It shouldn't, it should, it shouldn't go higher than twenty-nine, what this quote is. It could be less.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but what's, what's the prospect of it saying, well, we found something else and we might need to look for more? So is that a, a possibility also, or we're not going, we're not going past twenty-nine-nine?
No, we're going to, we're going to
We're cutting it there.
The, the resolutions you're going to see is not to exceed.
Okay.
And that's based on that they said they could probably do it for twenty-two nine, but if there's additional costs due to the, the
Disposal.
the PPM of lead, therefore resulting in complete disposal, then that's where the additional thirteen thousand dollars come from.
Yep.
And that's, that's it? That's the thirteen, that's, that's the max?
This is the change order, twenty-nine-nine. Let's go here, David Mary Depot.
To bounce off what Councilor Sheffield said, reading the, this quote, what, it looks like they're planning to do is do the remediation work, and then they're going to have it tested, and if the testing comes back, then it's going to cost us possibly thirteen thousand, so it could be less. They're actually planning already for worst-case scenario, which is the testing to fail with their initial remediation.
Right.
If I'm reading that right, because they're going to do a T-clip test.
Right, that's correct.
Correct. So it's kind of a built-in contingency for worst-case scenario, right?
Yes, yeah. Councilor Norris.
Well, I was going to ask, the worst-case scenario is if there's something unexpected, I don't know, bats in the wall or whatever. There's that fifty-nine hundred dollars, which is a credit, which is about, what is that, ten percent, twenty percent? So could that be used without coming back to council if it's ever needed?
Yeah, and we will also still have that sixty-six hundred contingency that was part of the original.
Yep.
So this is going to be above and beyond the original request.
Thank you.
Goes forward.
Any other questions or comments on this, on this item? Any hearing none need a motion to move this mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the next thing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Do you want me to find Linda?
What's that?
Do you want me to go find Linda?
Yeah. But I'm, but I'm not stopping. I mean, you can find her, but I'm moving forward. The next thing?
She's, yeah, she's out.
Okay, sorry.
I thought she said.
Linda's not going to be coming tonight, sorry. Tell Mary not to look for her. All right, we're going to go to six forty-two, which is Groton Utilities. Thank you, Jill.
Seven forty-two?
What did I say?
Six forty-two.
My apologies, seven forty-two, Groton Utilities. Mark Byron is going to be presenting these tonight, and two of these will be moving to the special mayor and council meeting of tonight. All right, Mark, we'll start with the Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Okay, so the, the Neighborhood Assistance Act is where Groton Utilities has agreed to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in return for matching tax credits. Actually, Ron, if you have some time, just speak to that action better.
This is a program that we've been doing the last few years, so I'm sure you guys remember some of the councils that have been here. So the way that the, the program works is that local nonprofits and municipalities can request a, a project through the state, and it's through the Department of Revenue Services. So they have to go to their local municipality, present to them, and then it's endorsed by the municipality. If approved by the DRS, they're on a list, which then we review that list of approved projects. With that, we've tried to look at organizations within our territory, so in this one here, it is, there were, there were two agencies, Riverfront Children's Center and Sacred Heart School, that are going to be potentially receiving it. So with, this is just a request to allow us to enter into this program. It's a dollar-for-dollar match from the sales and use tax that we pay, so this is really nothing out of pocket. We just, it's just a little bit of legwork on our side to get the application in. So once this is approved, we will submit to the state that here's who we want to fund, here's the dollar amounts. There's a set dollar amount that the state sets aside for this, so, but the max that we can do as a company is up to the hundred and fifty, but if more companies than they anticipate do it, this could be reduced a little bit, based on, because it's, like I said, that pool of money. So that we need to submit to the state for the state approval, and then the state will notify us once they get everybody's in for it. But again, this is nothing out of pocket for, it's just a little bit of legwork behind the scenes to get the correct applications in, and, and it does a good thing for the local, local organizations.
David Mary Depot.
Is there a deadline on this? Is that why we're pushing it?
Yeah, and historically, we've come later with it, but the, the true deadline is by September thirtieth, is get the application into the state, because it's never been, it's no, nothing out of pocket. We've just always done that kind of as a, this is a good cause that we're doing, and more, we act on it, even though it's more of a notification. But, so we just wanted to move it up and get it through the process, and that way it's approved before we do submit it to the state.
Typically, in the past, we've always come after the fact, after we've gotten approval, and, and I don't, I don't know that we've ever informed the council after we've, we've awarded the, the funds, but I know it's been after we submitted. So this time, since we were already going to be coming to you and needing a special meeting, we thought we would add this on here, so we could do our best to meet the deadline. Councilor Sheffield.
Sacred Heart School at ninety-three thousand eight eighty-four, that's a partial? Is that less than that, or is that their, their amount of seven, seven forty-two?
Yep, so, so the part, so what, we had supported Sacred Heart last year as well, and it may have been even the year before, I'm not sure.
Last two, last two years, we've supported Sacred Heart.
So it definitely was last year for the full amount. So when this was going through the selection committee, they decided to fund Riverfront for their full amount, because this is their first time coming through, and then it'll, we can only submit up to a hundred and fifty thousand, which is why there's the partial amount of the ninety-three. I don't know what their full request was offhand.
And next question is, does Director Guday need his signature on here or no?
These are just the, the action item sheets that went, when it went to the, to the UC, but we will have all the, all the sign-offs.
We'll have the proper signatures when we go forward. Councilor Norris.
This is a great program that this state does for nonprofits. First question, do you know how many nonprofits submitted initial paperwork on a project to us or Groton Utilities that they intended to go through this program?
I, I don't know offhand, but I think there was maybe three, because there's
It's, it's usually a very small number, it's usually less than five. And we, we've had no, up until last year, or maybe this year, we didn't have anybody from Basra apply. And, and we're, we're actually, the Groton Utilities customer service side is actually calling nonprofits up and making them aware of this and say, hey, you guys really need to do this. And I mean, we're, you know, southern term, beating the bushes to try to, to get people to come out and apply for this, because it's, it's free money for energy efficiency. And so there are some people, you know, for example, Sacred Heart, they got it. I mean, they know what to do, they know how to put in, and, and they're doing energy-efficient projects. And, and that's why in this case, we're, the GU is fully funding Riverfront first, and then the leftover money of the one fifty is going to go to Sacred Heart.
Right. Well, thank you and the staff for making that extra step to letting people know about it. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I need a motion to move this to the special mayor and council meeting of tonight.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay, PAR Electrical Contractors?
So the PAR, the PAR action has to do with setting the digging and setting transmission poles for our new, or for the upgrade of the transmission line, and I've asked Randy Soprano, our engineering manager, to speak to that, because the, the elephant in the room on this one is, we have a fifty percent the elephant in the room on this one is we have a fifty percent contingency in there. So we want to fully explain that to you.
Good evening, Counselors.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm Randall Suprenat, Groton Utilities Electrical Manager of Engineering. Um so um I don't know if you know this or not, but we own one point seven miles of transmission lines from Groton Buddington Substation on Route one eighty-four to the Geodona property. So we have three transmission lines, two are a hundred and fifteen thousand volts and one is sixty-nine thousand volts. So this project um was started because Eversource is updating their lines and they it promulgated to Groton and they we said, well, they're doing it. Um we have to install what's called OPGW, which is optical ground wire for NERC compliance, right? So that's we've been advised that that's necessary. In order to do that, we've got to put all new poles because the poles that are existing are um dilapidated and old. They're about fifty years old, maybe sixty years old. So this um action item is to give us the power essentially to um spend the money, but to not hinder the project with delays that could cost us much more. Um by allowing us to to um use change orders to make sure that we manage the project properly and allow for additional drilling expenses, et cetera, and delays that may occur because of the the issues that they'll find when they're drilling. So we worked closely with Eversource. They did the upgrades on their system. And they found when they started the drilling that they had way more rock and hard stuff that they did not expect to encounter. So we've got the forethought essentially. We've gotten um a locked-in price if we execute the purchase order before October first. Um but we want to make sure that we have the the leniency essentially to manage it properly and and extend the spend if we need to to keep the project going. So we saw something um with one of the other actions where we we locked in our price, but we couldn't get it through to council with the delays, and we ended up spending another sixty-five thousand because we had to get pricing, et cetera. So we want to lock this price in and make sure that we have the leniency. So the mayor, we we trust ourselves. We are going to look at this. We have a a construction firm looking over our shoulder watching this as well. We're going to have people on site to make sure that they're putting the correct hours, et cetera, et cetera. Um but the fifty percent contingency essentially helps us to prevent unnecessary delays, because if we have to come back to council and ask for more money, we have no idea what that's going to cost. And we don't with escalating prices because of COVID, labor charges, fuel charges, et cetera. Um it could escalate quite quickly. We don't want that to happen.
Not only that, this so ISO New England, which is a regulatory authority that is overall responsible for the infrastructure and the power and those kind of things, they're saying, okay, you need to upgrade your upgrade your power lines. So we're going to get an there's going to be an ROI on this uh as a result of us doing the work. Eversource owns the lines, so we're working with Eversource the other transmission lines. We're working with Eversource for the lines that we own in as as part of a dual project, so everybody's upgrading at the same time. Eversource is a is ahead of us a little bit, which is actually good, because we can benefit from their lessons learned. The other problem is if, this is why the contingency is large. I I voted for it through the com through the commission, but when I was originally briefed on the fifty percent, I choked a little because I'm like, okay, fifty percent contingency. I've never seen that in any of the stuff we've done. And then they come back and said, okay, well, here's why. And here's the downside risk if we don't meet this. So there's a there's a potential for increased costs. But there's also a timeline that we are expected to meet based on uh ISO requirements. So that's a little more background. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I have a couple of questions. Um so do we expect the total cost of the whole project to be higher? If we use if we were to use a good portion of this contingency to keep the project on track, does that is that automatically going to mean that the project is going to go higher in budget overall than we expected in the beginning?
No.
Because this is only a se- small part of the project.
Right, I can explain. So what we did is we based our pricing off of Eversource. Um they gave us preliminary pricing, what they thought it would cost for our system based on a unit per pole price for what it cost them initially. And that ranges for a pre-designed range is minus minus twenty-five percent to plus fifty percent. So we put in the plus fifty percent for the bond borrow to make sure that we had the leeway in there. So we're expecting the entire project to come under budget from the fifteen point two. But we want the we just all this really is is protection so that we don't have to delay the project. We had so a phone call on Wednesdays is a hundred and fifty-two people for these projects that have to do with all of all of New England essentially that Eversource is working on. So they're doing Mystic, Montville Tunnel, which is Preston, and um Gales Ferry, right? These are all projects that are happening around us. And if we delay, we cause delays with them, and I don't want Eversource mad at me. But um that's essentially all this. It's just a protection that essentially it's a raincoat, right? If we don't need the raincoat, we don't use it, right? That's kind of, I mean, it's a very expensive raincoat, but.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
Um well, and I just wanted the the reason I asked that is I know that several of us that have been on this council a while have um had to approve those changes in um price for items that we got delayed and it cost us more money. And I know that there is there've been a couple of us that have asked, like, can we do better project management so that this isn't happening in the future? Um so I'm happy to see kind of a creative unconventional solution to that. It does seem like a big number, but it makes sense if the overall project is going to stay the same cost. But this allows you flexibility on this portion of the project so that we don't have cost overruns in other areas. Um it makes sense to me, and I'm happy that we're kind of thinking more creatively, because it is very frustrating when we have when we approve something. And then it it's because of all the red tape, it doesn't go through quick enough, and we have an issue with pricing, and now we've got to spend fifty thousand more tax dollars than we planned.
So I want to expand too on the return. You talked about ROI. There's an eight to ten percent return on investment for ISO projects that are approved by ISO England, which this is one of them. So we would get ten uh eight to ten percent, up to eight to ten percent per year for the life of the asset. These assets are thirty to fifty-year assets. We have to establish that in the books. We work with Ron on that. But so it would be whatever we spend on this project, if we spend the entire fifteen point two million, we'd get that back for the life of the assets. Right, so.
So not only are you hedging your risk, but you're also guaranteed a rate of return.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
My last thing, sorry. Um and you may already be planning to do this, but this considering how big this project is, um I don't know what our end date or planned end date, but is this something that we could at the end, when it's completed, have you come back and give kind of an overview of how we did financially, time-wise?
Sure.
Based on our original approval of it? Because I know it's a huge project, and I don't know that people are aware of how much work goes into maintaining the utility and having to replace all of these things and maybe um like an overview of what this does for our future.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's a that's a good idea, and I think there's there may be other opportunities as the project progresses to come in and and give council uh status updates where we are.
We've already been working on this project for over a year, so we had to go to uh siting council, right? We had to do NDBs, which I don't know what that stands for, but it has to do with environmental permitting. And then we had to do a stormwater plan. So all those things had built-in delays, and so that's why we're now finally getting to doing the work, because we had to do all that and get approvals first. Um and Eversource helped with that as well. But we had a, I think it was a sixteen to ninety day delay on the siting council approval, which they gave us right away, but we had to wait. So there's a lot of waiting. Um and now we're ready. We're ready to go, so.
Okay.
Um can I just add, thank you for coming, because this is probably not your normal work hours? So I appreciate you coming to explain to us and be available for questions, because some this is confusing to those of us that don't work in utilities.
Any other questions or comments for Randy? Okay, if not, I would like to take a motion to move this to the special mayor and council meeting of tonight.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay, SCADA wastewater.
So uh there's two two items here uh for uh SCADA, one wastewater and one on the water side. Uh we pre we broke them into two parts, two actions. However, it is one contract, and the reason we did that, uh there there's a couple of reasons. So by uh by leveraging the economy of scale, both on the water and wastewater side, we were able to get a a better better contract. We've been we've been calling in these vendors for years as we needed them to manage this the SCADA system and, you know, make repairs, make improvements. So uh we want to go out and get one contract that's all encompassing service, maintenance, and installation. And we're actually going to save uh the company money by doing that. So the the first one is the uh, I think it is the wastewater division. But they're they're both in its paid for from non-bonded capital or wastewater expense budget, sorry. And then uh non-bonded capital for the other four years. Uh but both of those uh go together. They really are one contract with Woodard and Curran, who is our sole source provider. The reason they're the sole source provider is that uh the majority of the equipment, the SCADA transmitting equipment, is all Woodard and Curran equipment. And as we develop as a regional provider of water, all the water companies around us use Woodard and Curran so that we're able to get the the same kind of electronic readouts on our electronic uh, you know, dashboards.
Questions for Mark? And we're going to move these one at a time. Like a motion to move SCADA wastewater to the mayor and council meeting of uh October fourth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Need a motion to move SCADA water to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth.
So moved.
We have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Eastern Point Pump Station Generator.
So the Eastern Point Pump Station uh generator is part of our overall upgrade of the wastewater system. It's a very old generator that's down there now. Uh it it needs to be upgraded. It's on its last legs. And this is part of what we put in our uh our bond fund request. This will uh we this is one of many, many upgrades that we'll be performing over the next few years on those uh pump stations.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
Does this project, when um when do you expect this project to start?
Um as soon as we get approval, we'll be looking at ordering the equipment, and it depends on the delivery time of the equipment.
Is there going to be any impact on the, I know that it's not beach season, but there's people who live down there by the pump station? Is it going to be?
It should be.
Are we going to have trucks in the road or anything?
It should be nominal impact. This this doesn't involve closing roads or
Okay.
You know, this is work inside the building.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's a it's a good-sized generator.
Right.
So it's going to have to be trucked in, palleted, trucked and palleted in. But I couldn't see road closures for more than just a short period of time, just to get it there, get it out, get the old one out and put it in. I mean, we got to have the diesel, we need the diesel generator for backup. That is our fourth sewer main for that area that's down there. And something uh another project in affiliation with this that council approved, I think it was last time, was the replacement of the pump.
Pumps, yes.
So this is all part of the overhaul of our pump stations.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh hearing none. Need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay, AMI meter.
So AMI meters has to do with completing the uh automatic or automated meter uh infrastructure in the in the city of Groton. Uh there's several thousand meters left to do, actually two thousand and sixteen uh left to do. And uh the these are replacing the census first generated generation meters that have been in place uh for, you know, probably more than fifteen years. Uh these these pieces of equipment typically have a lifespan of, you know, twelve to eighteen, sometimes twenty years. The old the old style meters lasted, you know, probably for the life of your home, like forty years. But the newer style that uh um that we've implemented to take advantage of all the additional capabilities uh like automated, you know, turn-on, turn-off, things like that, um, you know, we've upgraded a couple of thousands of those, and this will complete that project. This is a several-year project.
Okay, questions on AMI meters?
Where exactly do these meters go?
Where your old meter socket. The the meter on the side of your house, those are the meters we're talking about.
So then the question is, like, where? Is there a particular neighborhood in the city? You're talking about the entire city?
Yeah, we have changed over a good part of the city already.
Right, but I'm talking about these here.
They're they're scattered around.
They're scattered around, okay.
Well, it's not just in the city. It's in our service territory. So the service territory encompasses all of the city and then some of the town. And these are the automatic meters, so they don't have to get out of the cars and and go up there and read the meter. They can do it automatically in the vehicle.
Yeah, these meters transit transmit via network to a node. And the node uh collects all the information and downloads to the uh uh meter data management system.
Right.
So there's no, there's no humans driving around uh looking at these things.
Obvious question. So obviously, you got to let folks know, but is there a do you let them know two weeks in ahead of time, a month ahead of time that we're coming and changing out these meters?
Actually, we don't tell them. We just change the meter, uh what we can.
No, I'm not suggesting you do.
Well, the meter, first of all, the meters are outside.
Right.
Second of all, there's no disruption
Of service.
To of service to the to the customer, so that's why we don't typically do it.
If if there was a disruption, we would notify them in advance. You know, there may be some some customers that don't have a bypass switch on their meter, you know, the meter can on the side of the house.
Counselor McCabe.
Lost my question out of my head. I can't remember.
Okay. All right, any other questions on AMI meter? Uh Deputy Mayor Depot.
Just to piggyback on what Counselor Norris said, I in all of my interactions with NEGU employees, they're always wearing badges, though, when they go to do work. So if someone has a question or if they see a suspicious person, the they wear badges and they have a uniform, so we should be. And they can always call customer service if they have a question.
Eight-six-zero-four-four-six-four thousand. If you have any questions. I mean, I know people are nervous and anxious out there and, you know, they worry about scams and those kind of things. These guys are just replacing the meter. They're not going to ask you about your account. They're not going to ask you for credit cards. They're not going to ask you for payment. So if anybody's out there doing that, don't fall for that. Call four thousand and verify. Uh or you can call the police. Before, Deputy, uh I'm sorry, Counselor McCabe.
My question i- is about these um radio transmitting meters. Is there some sort of audit or some way that we we can verify that, you know, we're used to a person coming to our home and looking at the number and making sure it's correct, that these numbers that are being transmitted are correct? I just, I can see myself getting asked that question.
Is there a way to audit? You mean, uh, okay, so people might suspect that since they can't do the reading themselves, yeah.
You know what I mean? Is there some mechanism that I can reach out and say, hey, I used to be paying this, but now you put this new meter in and now I'm paying this?
Yes, there is. We can work that through uh customer service and uh meter engineering. We can we can check all of those things and actually do a meter test that could be witnessed by the customer to make sure that they're reading one for one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on AMI meters? I didn't move this yet, right?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. High Voltage Maintenance Corporation.
I just have to find my place here. So High Voltage Maintenance, uh this is a routine transformer maintenance. Uh these are the large substation-sized transformers. Uh this this uh this maintenance uh is for necessary gasket replacement, oil filtering, pump replacements, fan replacements, and testing of the one X transformer at the Buddington Buddington Substation sixteen L. That's the transformer in preparation for the Eastern Connecticut Eastern Connecticut Transmission Upgrade, which goes from sixty-nine thousand volts to a hundred and fifteen thousand volts. So we have to do this in preparation uh for all of that transmission work. And this is the this is a And this is the, this is a company that, uh, provides those services. That is maintenance way beyond our ability.
Questions on this item? Counselor Norris?
Is this type of maintenance that some, has to be done routinely?
No, this is not, well, some, some like, uh, gaskets and oil filtering, things like that, right? That, that's kind of some routine things. But fan replacements and testing of the, you know, the actual electrical testing, we don't-
Okay.
That's, that's, those transformers are too large for us to do.
Got it, thanks.
Those are the ones that are about the size of your car.
Well, do we have other folks come in and do that, or is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Every couple of years?
Every few years, uh, we have a preventive maintenance schedule
Okay.
On all of our transformers.
Yep.
I, I mean, the substation transformers. And we hire, uh, uh, different, different, uh, vendors to come in and provide testing and
Got it.
Check oil, things like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Any hearing none? Need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. D and D Power Matting and Pole Replacement?
So D and D, um, uh, D and D is the company, they work for our master services agreement holder, uh, BHI Enterprises. This is for the, uh, replacement of the poles over there on Drazik Drive. Those are the poles that sit in the swamp. Uh, those poles are very, very old, you know, probably fifty, sixty year plus. If that line ever failed, uh, we would take out downtown Groton. And, uh, you know, and a bunch of big, uh, heavy hitters. So this, this is, this was big. We identified this, uh, a while ago. Uh, personally, this one always gives me a pinch. And, uh, you know, we have no way to recover from this. If this line went down, it would take us days and days. So this is a, this is a very hot job on my mind, um, to get those poles replaced. And the matting is to allow us access into that swampy area so that we can actually replace the poles. The poles will be replaced with steel structures this time, which will last, you know, much longer than most of us will be on earth, so.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanna clarify, you said that they work for BHI, but this is a subsidiary, not a subcontractor, right?
Yes, this is a subsidiary of BHI.
Thank you.
Counselor Norris?
Educate me. So, are we replacing all the poles in this particular area?
Um, Ray, do you remember how many poles it was?
Four. So there's two structures, there's two subtransmission lines, thirty-five thousand volt lines, two pole, two structures on each that are in the, in the swampy area.
And we're replacing all of those?
In the swamp, yes.
The four, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was just going from, there's such a small contingency here, that's why I just wanted to make sure all four poles have been changed. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Hearing none. Need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Emergency Preparedness Partnership?
Okay, so, um, we went out and forbid, uh, our, our emergency plan, the Groton Utilities Emergency Plan is, is pretty well dated. A lot of the procedures and processes in the, in that, in that emergency plan are, you know, dated in the, in the two thousands, like two thousand eight, two thousand nine. One of the things that, you know, I identified when I got here was we needed to upgrade that, upgrade that plan. Since then, we've had a number of storms, um, where you, you all have seen, where Eversource and UI, you know, Eversource got fined thirty-one million dollars and UI got fined close to a million dollars, right? So it's time to upgrade, uh, our plan, to bring it up to the regulatory requirements. Not that we're mandated to by PURA, but, uh, it makes sense to, uh, to those of us at the utility that we should be at least as good as they are in terms of our emergency plan. The, uh, part of the, uh, part of the expenditure is for EPP, Emergency Preparedness Partners, who were the only ones that bid on this, uh, but they have a great reputation. I actually, uh, saw them, uh, at UI being used. They have a good reputation. They're gonna up, upgrade our plan, plan, bring it up to current standards and maybe a little better. They're also gonna work out the roles and responsibilities. Uh, I don't think I've talked to the council about emergency response, but I did talk to the department heads and
Right, you did.
Some of the folks in the commission. But, uh, so they're gonna help us define the roles and responsibilities because, as you know, or, or you may not know, you probably don't know, places like Eversource and UI have like two, three hundred emergency response positions. Every single person in those utilities, whether you're a lawyer or a, or an analyst or an engineer, they have a storm hat. Everybody wears a storm hat. And that's where we're going in Groton Utilities and hopefully the city as well. Uh, everybody will have a storm role. And so we're gonna define those roles, uh, build the plan around those roles. And then part of the, the, uh, the contract is to train people in those roles and responsibilities. And then finally bring it all together with a, uh, you know, a drill. And, uh, so these people are, are very good at this stuff. I always joke with them because they just did this for Hawaiian Electric. That's a, that's a pretty bad gig, right? I always wonder, can I go help you? I'll take vacation and be a consultant for you, but, um, they do this all over the country. Uh, they've done it for municipalities, they do it for large utilities and, uh, we expect to get a really good product. We will not spend that amount of money. We will come under that amount of money.
Any other questions on this line item? Any hearing none? Need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move to, oh, what number am I on? It's six, seven. Five sixty-one Groton Utilities Financials, this is informing.
So, we'll keep it quick as we are just starting the new fiscal year, so there's not a whole lot to, to talk about, but we'll do our normal run through. So if we flip to page six, on row nineteen, the total electric revenue is eight point five million versus a budget of eight point four or favorable of a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Row thirty-seven, operating expenses are just under seven and a half million versus a budget of seven point six or a hundred and twenty-two thousand under. Row sixty-eight, the net income before bond principal requirements is just over a million or about one point one versus a budget of eight hundred and twenty-eight or two hundred and fifty thousand favorable. So as you can see, just going through, um, quickly through the, the revenue side, the residential and the industrial is doing good. It's kind of a similar trend that we saw, um, last year, if you recall, when we were looking at it, with the commercials still lagging a little bit behind. But again, we did make adjustments in this year's budget for some of those variances that we did see last year. The way that the, the revenue is done is it's more of a three-year average with any known adjustments that need to be made. So that's why that kind of brought it back in line, but it's still lagging a little behind. And then the same thing with the operate, the operation maintenance, the expenses are just divided throughout the year by twelve. So there's things that haven't started yet and it'll just kind of be based on the year, so. Just to, again, beginning of the year, so not a lot happening. There's a lot happening, but just not a lot from the financial side of it.
Questions on electric? Can we just move to water?
So on water, we'll flip to page twelve. Row seventeen, total water revenue, two point one versus a budget two point one, or seven, seven thousand, seven thirty favorable. Again, the same things that you'll, um, see there, residential is above budget with the sales for resale um, lagging behind and that's, uh, um, a timing there. Row thirty, total operating expenses, one point six million versus a budget of one point nine or three hundred and thirty-one thousand favorable. One of the big things to, that you'll see here that, um, is that middle one, depreciation, which is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand below budget. That is due to, because the water treatment plant is not online yet. It's still in, um, construction in progress. So once that does come online, you'll see that the depreciation start picking up for that and we start depreciating that fifty-four million dollar plant. And again, the, the expenses are just divided by twelve, so it's a, the timing. Row forty-four, net earnings before the DWSRF grant, five hundred and seventy thousand versus a budget of seventy-three thousand or just about a half a million favorable. Again, the big piece of that is from that depreciation, that about half of it. So it's, I don't know, review, same thing with water, that's some solid electric.
Questions on water? Okay, sewer?
Go to page seventeen. Row fifteen, total sewer revenue is at six hundred and eighty thousand versus a budget of six eighty-six or below budget of just about seven thousand. The big one there is the industrial, um, with the deduct meters, which is driving that, um, negative variance in the revenue. Row twenty-six, total operating expenses, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand versus budget six twenty-five or a hundred and forty-six thousand favorable. Row thirty-seven, the net income from operations is a hundred and seventy-five thousand versus the budget of thirty or a hundred and forty-five thousand favorable. So even though there is that little bit of a lag in the, in the revenue, it, um, has been offset by the under, under budget expenses.
Questions on sewer? Counselor Norris?
General question.
Sure.
So, the budget is, that we see is based on the total budget for the year divided by twelve?
For the expenses.
For the expenses.
For the revenue, we do project that out based on the historical. But for the expenses, it is truly just a divide by twelve.
Is there too many, so many potential hiccups where we could actually develop a real monthly budget?
It, it would be very hard. Um, there's, I can't even tell you how many expense GL accounts there are just in. Yeah, just to, to try to do that and, because you have the IT portion of it, the customer care portion. So like IT, there could be service contracts that come in all at one time during the year. And trying to distinguish it, that'd be pretty tough to do.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Well, and the other thing, if you look at the operations side, and I'm talking Mark's side, O and M's side, you may have storms that happen and that's, and that takes away, you may have capital projects that come up. You may have more or less work that comes up and they go back and forth. We've talked, we did, when I first got here, I did talk about, could we do that? But then they talked to me and said, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm a believer now that there are too many variables in order to get that. So the easiest way is just take your expenses, divide them by twelve. Some months are gonna be high, some months are gonna be low, but it's all gonna levelize out in the end. My, my concern, the thing I'm more concerned about is we, we base a budget on certain projects that we're gonna get done. And then at the end of the, of the budget, end of the year, do we go back and look and see what did we get done, what did we not get done? And if we didn't get them done, why did we not get them done? And there could be a good reason. It could be a capital project coming, it could be storms that took us away. These are all reasonable things and, and explainable things other than just make it as a wish list and we'll get there if we get there and if we don't, we don't.
And I was just gonna say, thank you very much for taking the time to analyze this stuff. So, when there is a little hiccup, you can explain what it is pretty handedly, so I appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Depot? Oh, you didn't have, I'm sorry. You didn't have a hand up, I'm sorry. Anybody else have a question on the financials? All right, we'll move to six ninety, city budget presentation, this is informing.
There, there's no, there's nothing for handout. We'll get back on track with the city financials next month, which will be the end of the first quarter. And again, same thing from the city side, there's just not a lot, there's a lot going on, but from a financial piece in the first two months, there's not a lot of activity. So, we'll bring that to the next committee, the whole with the, starting with that first quarter and then we'll go forward with them for the rest of the year.
Okay. So, the next thing is seven forty-eight, donation request. The first one is Children's First Groton. Seven forty-eight, let me get to that. So we have a, we have a children, let me get there, we have a Children's First Groton uh, request. They're asking for a thousand dollars. Uh, I think I have, so in the past, sixteen, seventeen, we gave a thousand, seventeen, eighteen, we gave a thousand, eighteen, nineteen, we gave a thousand, nineteen, twenty, we gave four fifty, and then twenty twenty-one, we gave a thousand. This is twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, Ron, do you know how much we have?
We have not done a donation yet in this fiscal year.
All right.
And just, so, we ended with twenty twenty-one with total donations of three thousand nine hundred, just so you're kind of aware of where last year ended.
And our initial pot is five thousand dollars. The initial amount, not, but the initial amount that we can pull from is five thousand dollars.
So we didn't spend?
We didn't spend.
All five last year?
That is correct. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I know this is not probably the, the time to say this, but next year, could we, like, whatever the timeframe is, that would be appropriate before the end of the fiscal year, could we notify people, maybe people who've applied in the past? I mean, 'cause five thousand dollars isn't, isn't a ton of money in terms of the budget and we budget it every year. So, I would like for us to hit that five thousand dollars every year. So is there a way, um, 'cause I know that there are sometimes charities that applied last year but maybe didn't apply this year or something like that. Is there a way to maybe notify them or put it out on, maybe to Health and Human Services or somewhere that we could contact and say, hey, we've got a thousand dollars left in this fiscal year, please apply? Or is that a weird thing to do?
I wouldn't say how much money we got, I would say don't forget to apply ASAP.
Well, I think, I think that's a good idea, maybe in the last quarter. You know, we, we go out, 'cause we know who the, uh, who typically applies and then go out. 'Cause I agree with you, and we got, it's going to a good use. So if we can spend the five thousand dollars, that's five thousand dollars I would like to spend. So, um, that's a good-
I, I would just make it a general statement
Right.
And not go to individuals.
Right. So we could probably do it at, at council meetings, we could start three months out.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, twice a month.
Maybe put it on our Facebook page?
Put it on the Facebook page.
Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Counselor Carter.
What did we give them last year?
Thousand.
Thousand.
I also remember, I, if it wasn't last year, maybe it was the year before. Or maybe, maybe it was this year. One of the reasons why we might not have spent it is because I, I think we were trying to conserve money for people who came in late.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And the year before, so last year we gave a thousand, the year before we only gave four fifty to these guys.
Correct. In twenty twenty, that was the year that it looks like that we kind of kept everything at the five hundred or below threshold for
Right.
For donations to one organization.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Counselor McCabe?
So, we didn't spend all of that five thousand last year. What about the, say, two previous years before that are going back? Are we consistently underhitting the five thousand mark or it was just last year? 'Cause it was a COVID year, so I don't know if-
We've, we've historically always been under the five, but we've been o- over four most of the years. And twenty was the one year that it was, um, only about half of it was spent, just under the twenty-five hundred. 'Cause that was the year where we were starting to see more donations coming in and there was anticipation. 'Cause a lot of them came through in the, in the, in the beginning of the fiscal year. Twenty, it's like eight, two, nineteen, nine, thirteen, nineteen, ten, eleven, nineteen, ten, eleven, nineteen. So we're kind of anticipating that, seeing we're getting all these upfront, that it's gonna play out. And then, the last one that we did was in January of twenty twenty, there was nothing that came in, kind of that second half of the fiscal year.
Counselor Carter?
Um, uh, uh, just another thing too, because I, I, I think, I think that the, what we wanna do is we wanna cater to the people that actually, um, come back every, not, not every year, but consistently ne- need this money from the city. But we also don't want to, um, not reach people that just simply don't know. So, so it, would there be a possibility of just maybe keeping it as it is? And then once we get to the end of the fiscal year, we can just make a donation to, to places within the city that possibly, we could reach out to them. What's stopping, what's stopping us to reach out with some of the?
Well, here's, here's the, the, the potential problem with that is you're picking winners and losers, right? So you're saying, I like this nonprofit- So you're saying, I like this nonprofit, so I'm gonna pick them. I don't like you or I don't know you. And so if you just.
Took the, what I just said is that, you took, that's not how I took that. I took it as we do it as we are now, but seeing if we go under, we could reach out to people and ask them, would you, are you in need of funds? And then we could disperse that. I'm not saying that we should give it to you, but we should, we could disperse. Say there's five places in the city or in the town that need funds, then we take the remaining money and just split that up. So we co- so we, so we hit that five thousand dollar mark, but we're giving to, do you see what I'm saying?
I got it. The, the, here's the, the challenge is, how do you know you didn't miss somebody? Right? How do you know that you got everybody or that you're being fair and equitable? That's the thing. So the thing that Deputy, that Deputy Mayor Depot said was if we put it on Facebook and we get it out there so that it were blasting it across.
I understand, but then, but then what if we end up with a hundred organizations for? You see, like what if we end in the influx of people and then we're giving two hundred dollars or whatever to somebody that might just, I don't know. I don't think you're, cause wh- what I'm saying is that the people that come back every year, they come back every year, right?
Yeah.
And obviously we give them the money, their money every year, right? Because it, and, I mean, they need it.
I, I don't have a copy of the resolution in front of me and I apologize for that, but there are certain criteria.
There has, and, and that's what I'm saying also.
That with the city and give back to the city and certain things that are in there. I think, like you said, maybe it's more of a reeducation piece of it, that this is available. Cause like you, all I think I've kind of mentioned is that maybe it's not out there. Maybe there's not a lot of people that know about it. One of the other things that we have looked at too is to, to make sure we're not doubling donations that we're working with the, the city and the mayor's office is working with Dan and the utilities to make sure we don't have organizations that are getting a donation from each side. So that has also changed some of that, that look.
Couple of years ago, we identified, we had some double dippers. They, they were not trying to manipulate the system, but it was a situation where the municipality and Groton Utilities were not communicating. Uh, it came across, what happened was I found out Groton Utilities was going to donate and I said, well, the, well, the council just donated. So that's why we drew it in and we say, and we make sure that we're talking to Dan Boggs with the utility so we know what he's, uh, contributing to so that we're not double dipping. Make sure we're fair and equitable. Uh, let's see, I think, uh, Councilor Norris standing up.
If I can piggyback on what you said, which I thought where you were going was, correct me if I'm wrong, is folks that apply or have a request now, give them what they've asked for. As we get towards the end of the fiscal year, we put out to the general public, Facebook, wherever it is, that there's money available, put in an application. But come, I'm making this date up, June first, if there's a thousand dollars left over, we divvy it, divide it up to the groups that we already gave.
Yeah, there's like a ways to do, cause I think if we, like, these people consistently come, come back, you know, every, every year, you know? And I think if we just, I don't know, I don't know the best appropriate way to say it.
Well, I think we should, I, I, no, no, I like what you said. My, my thing is, and Ron and I talk about this all the time, about being fair and being equitable. If you do it for one, you do it for all. You, if you do it this way this time, you need to do it this way next time. Try to be fair for everybody. That's, that's my whole thing. But I mean, I would love to give the money away. And so we gotta figure out, how can we do that so that it's fair and equitable? And we have some time, I think the council, if you can ruminate on it and think about it a little bit and then we could talk about it at a future Cal, recommendations from council, we can go in that direction. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just gonna comment, um, I think Councilor Carter was bringing up too, what if we get a bunch of applicants at the end of the year? And I, I think the, you know, we have the ability to choose who we donate and the amounts. And if that does happen, we could always pick a few of them and then set and remind the others that the fiscal year starts on whatever date and we will have another, you know, you can reapply the next fiscal year. There's nothing stopping people from doing that. So, which is kind of, you know, it's our judgment to decide who. So for example, if a charity applies that doesn't actually need the money until September or something, we could technically deny that request and then have them reapply for the next fiscal year and effectively kind of do the same thing. You know what I mean? So I think if that does become an issue, we could just, you know, get all the applications and then we would decide what makes the most sense and, um, you know, divvy it up that way.
Well, that's a good idea. Everybody. So. Well, and, and that, so that's the thing. Well, the funds don't roll over. So they don't roll over. So anyway, um, I, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth, but I also need an amount. So what amount are you, is the council comfortable with?
Thousand dollars?
Okay, all right. So I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth in the amount of one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. All right, let me put that in there, one thousand dollars. Okay, the next one is Dr. Martin Luther King Scholarship Trust Fund.
So, I like, I'll start this, I'll start this one off.
I was gonna say, uh, Ron and I had a discussion on this this morning because some of you that have been here in the past previous councils may say, wait a minute, we've never done this before. Why is this coming to us now? And I'll lead off with that with Ron. I'll turn it over to you.
So in the, this is the first time that this is coming through in this format as a donation through the community development fund, similar to how we've been doing them. Historically in the past, we've bought a, um, table that came out of the mayor's budget for the, the dinner and the award ceremony. However, due to COVID, um, they are not having that, um, dinner this year. So therefore they're just looking for donations in general. So that's why it trans, it's kind of being transferred from something that the mayor would have picked up as an event to then now going to the donation piece of it. So historically, you, from this piece, you haven't seen anything, but I believe the tables was six fifty. That was for the.
Yeah, and I honestly don't remember.
I believe the last time.
It was either eight or ten people at the table. Uh, we sponsored a, uh, when Westside was here, a Westside middle school student and their parent. So, and I think some of you may have actually gone. I don't, I think you guys have gone to that before. It's a tremendous event. I mean, it's a wonderful scholarship. Uh, and, you know, and, and matter of fact, they just awarded, made awards. If you looked in the paper recently, they just presented awards. So this is getting ready for the next scholarship fund.
And just, so we did, we did not do anything for this organization last year in fiscal twenty twenty-one. Just because of the COVID, they didn't have the dinner last year, nor did it come through as a donation. So this year, they're not doing the dinner again, so that's why it's being brought to you in this format as a donation.
And we also identified Groton Utilities is not, uh, provided to this group. Is that right? Did we verify that or not?
I believe so, but we can double check.
Okay, we'll double check, but I'm pretty sure.
I believe Jill did.
I, that's what I think. I think Jill told me that, uh, she verified with Dan that they were not donating to the Martin Luther King Scholarship fund this year. Councilor McKeon?
Are we at that point where we can make a recommendation?
I'm ready to receive a recommendation.
I'd like to recommend a thousand dollar donation to the Martin Luther.
Counsel, do I get a consensus on that? Oh, you're good. I'm sorry, Councilor Norris, you're good? Deputy Mayor, you're good. All right. So in that case, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October fourth in the amount of one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Can I have a request?
Well, we have, uh, yes, and I think I know what your request is gonna be. Let me, so we're now at the point, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, Councilor Norris?
I, I just wanna say with a thousand dollars that we notate that it is a brand sponsorship.
Yes. Yeah, that is, is a student from the city. We have put those stipulations on other, uh, other nominations, but other donations that we've done before. Stipulated that it's a Groton, a City of Groton student. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Hey, does anyone need a quick break before we go into the special meeting? In theory, the special meeting should be pretty quick, okay? All right, I'm gonna call this, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the City of Groton Mayor and Council, uh, special meeting for Monday, September twenty-seventh to order. City Clerk, please, caller all.
Sorry about that. Present we have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, Counselor Rashad Carter, Counselor Lisa McCabe, Counselor Paul Norris, Counselor Stephen Sheffield, Finance Director Ron Yuhas and City Clerk Megan Peters. Excuse is Counselor Christine Piazza.
Okay. New business, Councilor Norris. Resolution R dash twenty-one dash nine dash one forty-nine. I'm sorry.
Um, if I'm reading the right one. Therefore be resolved that the mayor and council authorize Groton Utilities management to contribute up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Neighborhood Assistance Act program in return for matching tax credits pending approval from the state of Connecticut. I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We discussed this earlier tonight. Are there any further, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor McKeon?
Resolution R dash twenty-one dash nine dash one fifty. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize Groton Utilities Management to issue a purchase order not to exceed two million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, including a fifty percent contingency to Par Electrical Contractors, Inc., fifty-five, Cornew Way, South Windsor, Connecticut, for the drilling for poles as part of the transmission project to be paid from the transmission lines. Fourteen ten, fourteen eighty, four hundred. Buddington Substation, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, Bond Fund Project. I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This was previously discussed tonight. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Uh, need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out. Staff, thank you for being here. Randy, go ahead and give them a call.
Can we leave these here, um, for discussion on another night?
Yep. Well, you can either take them. Okay, got it. Okay.
That's, that's a good idea.
Yep, got it. HR. We'll just pass it out. That way you don't lose it. We'll do it next, we'll do it next, uh, mayor and council meeting. All right.
I mean, you don't have to, but that way you shouldn't have to print out another one.
Take the whole thing, take the whole thing?
I'm not doing your recycling. I still got a laundry basket full of stuff when I was a council.
I've been shredding, I've been, I've been shredding.
So I'm doing the scare phone.
Are you really? Oh, good. Absolutely.